Please rise to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk call roll.
Counselor Ray Cupro. Counselor Tenere Garcia. Counselor Robinson. Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Here.
Counsel Officer Nada.
Here.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Vido, absent. Counselor De Jesus. And Counselor Judy Garcia.
Present.
Ten members present, Mr. Chairman.
We'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is memoriam, celebratory resolution. We have a resolution introduced by Counselor Vega Maldonado, Counselor De Jesus, Counselor Tenere Garcia, Counselor Judith Garcia regarding Women's History Month. It reads, whereas in February nineteen eighty, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March eighth nineteen eighty as National Women's History Week. And throughout the history of the United States, whether in their homes, in their workplaces, in schools, in the courts, or during wartime, women had fought in the absence of oppression due to gender, race, ethnicity, and class. And whereas, women now represent approximately half of the workforce of the United States, and in the city of Chelsea, women make up about forty-eight point three percent of the population as of April first twenty twenty. Women are particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in Chelsea. And whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background serve as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social movement. Women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. Whereas this year's theme is providing healing, promoting hope during the pandemic, the women of Chelsea have continued to exemplify their commitment to the humanitarian, social, environmental, and economic causes by being at the forefront of volunteering, organizing, and working within the community, and doing so while also maintaining a family and creating a career for themselves in the middle of the global pandemic. And whereas on January twentieth twenty twenty-one, Kamala Harris became the first ever woman vice president of the United States. Amanda Gorman was the youngest known inaugural poet. Sarah Thomas was the NFL's first female referee. Sarah McBride became the first openly transgender state senator. As the world sees the first, they will not be the last, such as our own Dr. Almiel Bada, being one of the first Latina superintendents in the state of Massachusetts, and Chelsea's first diversity inclusionary office, Candace Perez. These women will continue to break societal roles and expectations. And whereas on January third twenty twenty, the city of Chelsea inaugurated a term with the most female counselors the city has elected. Counselor-at-large, the Molly Vido. Counselor District Two, Melinda Vega Maldonado. Counselor District Three, Norielis De Jesus. Counselor District Five, Judith Garcia. And Counselor District Seven, Tenere Garcia. And whereas despite the advancements of women, much remains to be done to ensure that women realize their full potential as equal members of society in the United States, especially BIP-POC women. To continue with the advancement of women, we are looking forward to the creation of a council of women's advancement for the introduction of intersectionality in policies, and as praxis as well, and incorporating accommodations for women to return to work in an environment conducive to their needs. Now therefore be resolved that the Chelsea City Council, HABRID, designates March twenty-two, March twenty twenty-two as Women's History Month, and continue the celebration and support for women across the city and nation. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Nor, uh, De Jesus, what is the motion?
Motion to speak.
Motion to accept and file under suspension.
Motion to accept and file under suspension with objections.
See him, no objections, you have the floor.
So, felicidades a toda mi mujer bella de Chelsea, mi guerrera que yo tanto admiro. Congratulations to all of my beautiful Chelsea women. I admire you all for all that you do on a day-to-day. I just want to take a brief moment to highlight among the many abilities and strengths that we hold as women, the one I admire the most is our ability to build and shape the future, our future here in Chelsea through nurture. And I'm not just talking about motherhood, I'm talking about the sisters, I'm talking about the grandmothers, the mentors, um, it, you know, the social workers. My entire life I have been influenced by empowering women in Chelsea, from my own mother to my mentor of over fourteen years, Gladys Vega, and, and just being able to view the, the way that females in Chelsea have paved the way for others, such as our very own detective Medina here in Chelsea Police Department. I want to make sure that we recognize the mind, spirit, and body of women, and the amazing things that we are able to, to overcome. In twenty twenty, when our country was hit by COVID, and our children were sent home for virtual learning, many of the households, it was the women who had to continue as essential workers and navigate their new roles as the assistant teachers in the home. And it was just amazing to see how we held it down and continue to hold it down day by day. So again, thank you to all the empowering women in our community, um, the nurses, officers, grocery store employees. Because of you, we can, we can have hope for a brighter future. Today I returned to the office myself with my child. My other two children, Aleah and Jordan, were also raised in the office space. And I just want to end with a message to our local businesses, organizations, and government agencies, places of employment in general. Let's not just celebrate women this month, let's support them as they re-enter the workforce. All right, let's, let's, let's clear that huge gap in the workforce where childcare is one of the main reasons our women just can't jump back in. For years, we have been seeing the huge cost burden of childcare in society. And I'm so glad that we're having these conversations locally and in our government about childcare. So if you're able to accommodate the female employees you have with childcare, this is the year to do it. If you're able to implement childcare, uh, child-friendly workspaces so we can bring your children to, to, to work, let's do it. And for our new moms, simply having a safe and comfortable space to breastfeed our babies, that makes a huge difference and impact. Let's work together and keep increasing the females in our workforce, and let's move, remove the gender-based barriers from positions of power in government so we can continue to see more, more of our women run for office. So yeah, let's not just celebrate, let's take action this month. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Vega Maldonado.
Muchisima gracias, Norielis, that was beautiful. By the way, um, good evening and congratulations ladies. Buenas noches y felicidades mujeres. This is, this month is dedicated to you, to us. Este mes es dedicado a ti y a todas nosotras. I want to highlight this year's theme, Providing Healing, Promoting Hope, which all women around the world exemplified as second nature during these past two years surviving the hardships and impacts of COVID nineteen. Chelsea being the hotspot of the nation, it was very hard to live through that, but also very inspiring, as I reflect how many women stepped up and showed up as a united front. I'm going to reread this excerpt from our resolution. During the pandemic, women of Chelsea have continued to exemplify their commitment of humanitarian, social, environmental, and economic causes by being at the forefront of volunteering, organizing, and working within the community, and doing so while also maintaining family and creating a career for themselves in the middle of a global pandemic. Thank you, muchisima gracias. Women of Chelsea, you did not go unseen. I will be remiss if I don't recognize my mother, Gladys Vega, who's a tremendous leader and a pillar in the community of Chelsea. She lives and breathes fighting for human rights. Thank you for all you do. It is an honor being your daughter. Also, I want to take a moment and talk to our girls. I, I want to ask my female colleagues to stand with me. As we do this, okay? Dear girls, we are here and we have your back. You are beautiful, confident, and ambitious. We hope to inspire and motivate you. You are smart and capable. You will go through many ups and downs. Don't give up and fight. You will surpass them. Never stop trying. You have the power within you. You're Chelsea. You are the now and the future. We need you. The world needs you. Remember who runs the world, girls. Lastly, here's to strong women. May we know them, may we be them, and may we raise them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Brown.
President, I want to congratulate this resolution. As we know, nineteen ninety-five, I believe, when they start recognizing women for the dedication experience and all that they've done. Resolution speaks of our first African-American vice president of the United States, the accomplishments. But today I just want to stand and say that it's an honor, a privilege to be here. It's five on the roster on the resolution, but it's only four here today. But we do include our other counselor-at-large for not only inspiring us, but it's an honor for me to serve with you and sit with you and just learn from you. Your achievements here in Chelsea, your experience here in Chelsea has actually done what the resolution states. It inspires others to do and feel that they can do these things, whether it's being a mother, whether it's being a business owner, whether it's being a fighter. You give them strength, you give them confidence, you give them courage. So I'm honored to be a part of your day as we start tomorrow for this whole month. But more importantly, we all have mothers. So even before they started recognizing this month, we knew how important women were. So I thank God for my mothers and all the mothers that survived and have geared us and, and supported us to, allowed us to be who we are today. But most importantly, the honor goes to the four beautiful women here and our other sister counselor, beautiful counselor that's absent, on the outstanding job that you do in the city of Chelsea. You put yourself on the ballot, you put yourself on the front line, you said it in the resolution, you were out there in COVID. I believe everyone here was out there in COVID. Everyone, all the women here, and so congratulations on this resolution. You earned it and you inspire us. Thank you.
Counselor Cupro.
As a father of eight daughters, I'd like to thank my mother, my beautiful wife, and all women, because women is the backbone of every one of us. Without women, there'd be no men. I can never figure out why they underestimate women. You should never underestimate a woman. Look what keeps us all together. The glue that keeps a house together is the women, not the men. They are the glue of all. Without them, I'm, I'm, there'd be none of us. But besides all of us being part from women, is the women is a special people. They are very special people. It takes a long time for a man to really understand what a woman is. It doesn't just come in a day. But it took me a while to understand, and when I finally understood, I understood that a woman is everything. Without a woman, there'd be nothing. And I thank yous all for being women.
Counselor Robinson.
I want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I know we couldn't put everybody in a resolution, but I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Zonta Club for all the work they do locally and internationally. I want to recognize our own Cheryl Leon Watson Fisher. I think most of us who know Amanda Albert as the athletic director, she is a professional football player that's been a twelve-time All-American. And I want to recognize a friend of mine who actually coached at MIT and became hired by the Memphis Grizzlies as a female assistant coach. And also recognize Marie Butts for all the work that she did with the pandemic with the nurses here. I want to congratulate my colleagues again. Thank you.
Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Buenas noche. I'm going to say this first part in Spanish. Spanish is my first language. Hay mujeres que se sienten realizadas ser madres, otras al encontrarle el amor de su vida, otras con tres títulos universitarios, y otras viajando. Tenemos que entender que no todas aspiramos a lo mismo, pero todas somos responsables de nosotras mismas. No podemos culpar a nuestras circunstancias. Crear tu realidad como mujer es un deber. Tu mujer eres posibilidades, y puedes hacer lo que sea. Sé poderosa y media escandalosa, porque de ninguna mujer silenciosa se ha escrito un libro. Quiero tomar un momento y darle las gracias a mi vieja, mi abuela, y mi gran madre, que aunque su niñez no fue la mejor, lo dieron todo para darme la mejor niñez posible. A mi abuela gracias por enseñarme a hablar, escribir, y leer español. A Cocotazo limpio. Me decía en la escuela te enseñarán inglés, pero aquí hablarás español. Vieja, no sabes cuánto te agradezco a diario por hacerme una mujer completamente bilingüe. Y ser una mujer orgullosa de mis raíces y mi cultura. Gracias por enseñarme a amar al prójimo sin juzgar. A mi madre Socorro Vega me enseñaste tanto con poco. Y a pesar de no saber mucho inglés, fuiste la primera en nuestra familia en comprar una casa. La casa donde actualmente vivo con mis hijos. Gracias por siempre creer en mi sueño, por apoyarme en mi locura, por ser mi fanática número uno, por enseñarme a rezar y tener fe. Por ser una madre ejemplar aunque tu mundo se derrumbaba a tus pies. Gracias a tus enseñanzas y tu seguridad amo la mujer quien soy. Fuiste tú quien me enseñó a luchar por lo que amo. Mujeres, hoy las celebramos. Si tienen un sueño, lucha, sé fuerte, y echa pa'lante. Amá la mujer que eres hoy, mañana, y siempre. So I'm going to say it really quick in English. There are women who feel fulfilled as mothers, others by finding the love of their life, others with three university degrees, and others by traveling. We have to understand that not, not all of us aspire to the same thing, but we are all responsible for ourselves. We cannot blame our circumstances. Creating our reality as a woman is a must. You are possibilities and you can do anything. Be powerful and scandalous, because no silent woman has made history. I want to take a moment and thank my vieja, my grandmother, and my wonderful mother, who although their childhood was not the best, gave up everything to give me the best possible childhood. To my grandmother, thank you for teaching me Spanish, right? To, to speak right and read Spanish. You told me at school they will teach you English, but here you will speak Spanish. Vieja, you do not know how much I thank you every day for making me a completely bilingual woman, and for being proud of my roots and culture. Thank you for teaching me to love others without judging. Socorro Vega, my mama, you taught me so much with so little. Despite not knowing much English, you were the first in our family to buy a house, the house where I currently live with my children. Thank you for always believing in my dreams, for supporting me in my crazy endeavors, for being my number one fan, for teaching me to pray and have faith, for being an exceptional mother even though your world was crumbling at your feet. Thanks to your teachings and your security, I love the woman who I am. It was you who taught me to fight for what I love. Ladies, today we celebrate you. If you have a dream, fight, be strong, and go for it. Love the woman you are today, tomorrow, and always.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Uh, Mr. President, as you can see, emotions are running high here today. And I want to say, you know, it's, it's special for me, because just in twenty fifteen, I remember when I got elected, I was only twenty-three years old, and there were only two of us here. And today, with so much pride, I get to sit in the middle, right here, next to three powerful women, who, I know there's a gentleman back there who's, who's holding the front as well. But, but today is particularly special, because we're hearing the stories of women that I can relate to. For the first time today in history, not only do we have Counselor De Jesus, but we also have a baby here. And I thank you for really uplifting the needs of working women. And I think you're showing that, and you're advocating for them, and we need more women like you. We've heard from Melinda Vega, like Melinda, Counselor Melinda Vega. I, I wish we could hold hands with all the women pioneers of Chelsea, not only your mother, who has been on the front lines like a guerrera, but also the other woman. I think a woman like Fatima Melara, who is our, our administrative assistant, that deserves a shout-out, right? I think of women like Lo Urde, right? Who, who are in the front lines communicating the very needs of this community bilingual, a bilingual speaker. I think of Jeanette Sinthron, who handles the parking department. I think of our interpreter who's back there, who's also making sure that our, that our meetings are accessible. I think of Mary Burke, who was a leader, one of the biggest pioneers in education that Chelsea was so blessed to have for so many years. I think about Joanne Cromwell, who leads the Chelsea Black community in ways that we've never seen before. I think of all the women who to this day continue to be the economic engines of this community, the women who cleaned the offices in Boston and keep those places running. I think about the women who are dying to continue to serve in our boards and commissions that we barely see and we barely get to recognize, because we don't have to elect them, but they take the time of their day to serve, and they do it for free, because they want to create a brighter Chelsea. I think about the women that are working in factories right now to raise their children like my mother did. My mother works at a local factory to this very day, and I share that story, because I see my life reflected in the many stories of her individuals and families here in Chelsea. So women need to be celebrated not only today, but every single day, because they're pioneering, they're leading. And let me tell you, this world is hard, because the playing field is not the same for women. So we've shown, and I feel very blessed that I share this space with other counselors that are willing to work together. I can say that just in a matter of weeks, days, from when these ladies got elected, we united and we brought legislation, and we're working together, and we're supporting each other. And that is what our women need to continue to see. Women that are willing to lead together, work together, to create a better place and a better city. So thank you to all the mothers, thank you to all the single ladies out there, thank you to all the scandalous women who are willing to lead and are not afraid. We should celebrate you. I also celebrate the women who constantly fight for environmental justice in our community, Maria Belén, Rosi Ann Bon Giovanni, and the list goes on and on, because we continue to, to pave the way. So thank you all. I can't wait to continue to work with all you, and let's continue to celebrate women, and let's continue to work together to make things better. Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, will that motion carries, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is public speaking. Is there anyone here who would like to address the city council? Please come up to the microphone, state your name. Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the regular meeting minutes for February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. Do I have a motion to adopt? Counselor Brown asked that we adopt the minutes under suspension, so move, seeing no objection. For the next item on the agenda, we have a communication from City Manager Tom Aberzino regarding an update on the quiet zone and the construction of the market development. Dear counselors, I am writing to, in response to the recent city council orders requesting an update on the establishment of the quiet zone and development at the Market Basket site. With respect to the quiet zone, the city's engineers consultant, VHB, has completed its full design of the project. We are currently awaiting final design approval from the Federal Railroad Administration, our, our FRA, and we hope to obtain, which we hope to obtain imminently. Once FRA approval occurs, we will advertise the project for public bidding. If all goes well, construction should be completed by the end of calendar year twenty twenty-two. Once construction is completed, we will petition the FRA to re-establish the quiet zone to all six crossings in Chelsea. As for the development of the, at the Market Basket site, we did have a meeting with Market Basket's development team in early February. We impressed upon Market Basket that the city desired substantial redevelopment of the site. Unfortunately, although Market Basket indicated that such development was in its future plans, the company did not commit to any timeframe. The only imminent, immediate development the company plans to pursue is a small liquor store addition to the current Market Building. What is the wish of the council? Counselor Robinson.
Accept and file communications under suspension. And actually, on the first part, we did get approved, the final approval from the feds to move forward so we can finally address the horns. In regards to Market Basket, I've had a lot of concerns. I know that they're going to be part of the new, um, the new RFP that's going out. But I, I've been keeping tabs, they just expanded two liquor stores, one in Denver and one in, I think it's Waltham. They want to build a twenty thousand square foot building in Chelsea. Like this. My concern is it's going to hurt our local businesses who have liquor licenses. And as you could see, the aisles of, of the liquor stores are much larger than any business that we do have here. So that's one of my concerns. I know they're going to be part of the study, and I hope eventually that they will come forward with a design, so that they can expand their properties and we can establish a more lucrative real estate tax coming from Market Basket. So I just want to update you on that and thank you for your patience.
Counselor Cupro.
Ask the city manager a simple question.
Through the chair.
Can I ask him?
Through the chair.
Yes.
Would you like to ask through the chair?
No, 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 no. Would you like to ask the question for me? Can I, okay. I just want to know, if he could come up and explain something, could he?
Counselor Cupro, through the chair, would you like to ask the city manager a question?
Yes.
What was the question, sir?
My question is a simple one. What if Market Basket decides not to do anything with that property? What could we do? Let's say, like, he says there's a timeframe and they didn't commit to anything. Let's say they decide they don't want to do nothing for twenty years. What could the city do?
Well.
Mr. President, through you, you know.
Thank you.
The city's leverage with respect to Market Basket is no better than it is with any private owner of property. We can nudge them, we can try to entice them, but at the end of the day, we don't have much direct ability to control what a private property owner does on its private property. You know, the ultimate leverage a city has is to take property by eminent domain when it doesn't get what it wants. But that is a harsh tool. I would never recommend it in these circumstances. So for the most part, most municipal governments have very little ability to control. So for the most part, most municipal governments have very little ability to control what happens on private property. That's just the nature of the business. So we try to encourage developers through tools like zoning relief, through tools like programs where we might help them with, uh, economic support. But at the, you know, when all is said and done, it is private property exclusively under the control of the private owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. We'll now move on to unfinished business, seeing none. We'll move on to second readings, we have none. We'll then move on to new business, which is we have an order introduced by Councilor De Jesus regarding the city manager to instruct the Department of Public Works to stabilize the street sign on the corner of Crescent Ave and Villa Street. What is the wish of the council? Councilor De Jesus?
I wish to accept and file under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, that motion carries. We have another order, request that the City, the Traffic and Parking Commission look at the placement of a speed bump at Crescent Ave between Eastern Avenue and Lewis Street, introduced by Councilor De Jesus. What is the wish of the council?
I wish to accept and file under suspension if there are no objections, and may I speak on it?
You may.
So I understand that with speed bumps, um, often it's difficult, um, for the city to, um, conduct its snow removal or for the Department of DPW to conduct a snow removal. But in this area in particular, we have four, one of the biggest schools in, in the city of Chelsea, four schools in, in one. And, um, there are many children who walk to the building from the neighborhood, and it is a street that I am seeing a lot of speeding, as well as my neighbors have requested, and I've gotten a number of calls, um, to see if we can address it through implementing a speed bump.
Okay, seeing no other ones, that motion carries. We have the next order, we have a request from the Subcommittee on Conference, we scheduled for a presentation from the Tufts Equitable, Tufts Equitable Engineering Designs for the School for Chelsea Homelessness Project by Councilor Judith Garcia. Councilor Garcia?
Thank you, uh, Council President. I actually wish to make an amendment to that, and if we can strike Subcommittee on Conference and instead send it, if we can move this to Subcommittee on Economic Development and Housing.
Seeing, seeing no objections to the amendment?
I briefly wish to speak on it. So just very briefly, um, the Councilor De Jesus is actually the chair of the Subcommittee of Economic Development and Housing, and it makes sense to send this there. But there are a group of Tufts University students who have been conducting studies here in Chelsea and have pretty much innovative approaches on how to address homelessness. So they will be presenting that to the council. So I found, find that the committee chaired by, uh, Councilor De Jesus makes the most sense, but you are all welcome to attend, um, this very important information session and presentation from Tufts University students. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further business, I'll now ask if there's any announcements to be made? None? At this time, then we'll go on, if there's any moments of silence, if there's anyone. Councilor Robinson?
Yeah, um, longtime Chelsea I resident, former, um, Alzac, former Alzac sub, and also Christopher Schmidt, who worked at the Chelsea Island Y, who lived in Chelsea, passed away this past weekend.
I'd also like to add the state police officer who lost her life on this past weekend on Highway ninety-three up in Stonem, Reputi, I believe was her last name.
Tamara Booty.
And also, um, let us also keep, um, the international conflict that's going on between the two countries, Russia and Ukraine. There's a lot of casualties, it's not being reported. Let us pray for those families on both sides, for they're not the ones making the decision. So let us keep them in our prayers. Thank you.
Councilor Cupro?
Also for George Chappelle's grandmother, a longtime resident of Chelsea for many, many years, for forty years, I'd like to, for her too.